Ever have trouble pests in school? So you got pest controls or problem anywhere today?
I think we got that taken care of.
A little bit bad.
No, this is where they come around and spray drugs and that type of thing.
Do you have a problem with mice or anything?
Once in a while.
Bats?
They don't deal with bats.
I imagine you freaked out when it came around.
Yeah, I don't count the mice.
We did have a company come out and look at that and...
They scare me.
It's kind of hopeless cause of the elementary.
Can you follow up a little bit?
I mean, lots of big... There's so much of that up underneath those corrugated steel or so many places. Okay, no further questions. Entertainer, motion.
I'm wishing to approve this consent agenda. Matt, financial toward the claims.
Is there a second?
No second.
Who's the seconded? Steve?
Yes.
Jason? myself, yes. Mike?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
In motion period. Public comments. You're not like that fortunate. Your agenda set aside for public comment. Each person wishing to address the board will be recognized by the board president. Also, each person wishing to address the board will be allowed only one opportunity to do so this evening. Request that you limit your comments to five minutes or less, and we will advise you when that five minute time period has elapsed. Excuse me. Please remember that it is a public meeting for conduct of the business of the claimed public school district. Offensive language, personal attacks, hostile conduct will not be tolerated. You should be further advised that there's no legal protection for any comments that are made. Other than public comments. Okay. Discussion item number four. Discuss lines. Guidelines for attendance at coaches, activity, clinics, sponsor clinics. I did include that in your packet. The board had asked to write this down. Kind of what we were planning on doing, and I think, I guess, in some background through negotiations, this was kind of brought up, although it wasn't in the negotiated agreement. We said, you know, let's try to put something together, so come up with some ideas as far as how we would pay like athletic coaches or could be speech coaches, you know, their activities and that if they're going to be attending clinics, so. Try to be consistent with what we do with the organizations to some degree, like FFA and FCC LA. You know, basically, the district will take care of registration fees. Two clinics, so that's like, I think the intent was there if you were, you coached two sports, there'd be two clinics. And I guess my idea with it is probably like one football clinic, you can say a wrestling clinic, not probably two football clinics, but you know, that type of thing. Try to address registration fees, transportation. The idea there was, you know, use school vehicles when possible. It's over 150 miles, probably take your own vehicle. You'd be reimbursed for the first 150. We set kind of 150 mile or 150 mile limit. Now, with the understanding that Carney, I think, just a little bit over that, Carney would be included, so it would include, you know, Carney, Hastings, Lincoln, Omaha, Sioux City. You know, and they catch most of the areas. If you're looking to go into an action convention someplace, then, you know, that's not gonna... I don't think the district needs to pay your mileage for that whole, probably that whole thing.
I mean, the Sioux Falls probably would...
I don't know how falls, Sioux Falls, it might...
About two hours.
Yeah, it would cover, how they cover that, so, yeah. And we do have some clinics, I think, out there every once in a while, so. Lodging, basically, the, you know, we pick up the motel rooms and try to run that through the A D O principle as far as, you know, making those reservations, that type of thing, so we're, you know, we kind of know what type of motel we're staying at. We've never had a real problem with that, staying at the, you know, the embassy suites or something and paying $250 a night for a room. And then the meal's just kind of a standard thing. If you bring receipts in and you'd be reimbursed for it as a certain amount for breakfast, lunch, and dinner, of course. You know, some, many of the hotels you play, you stay at anymore, you know, it's continental breakfast, you don't have any, you know, expenses for that and types of things, so. At least this gives some direction as far as, at least, you know, how we will handle, handle things.
How come no reimbursement, person with the law for taxes?
Can't do that. Can't reimburse the taxes. They really frown on it.
Really?
They've done absolutely several...
It's been a long time.
If that's true, then can you use the school's no tax number?
Not just to take that.
I don't understand why that, why that's in there, unless that's a law or something.
Yeah, it's just, yeah.
That doesn't make much sense.
Well, I, I don't disagree with all...
Cause a lot, a lot of times we...
He's talking about...
Okay. Any questions on this? Any other ones?
So does this compare, like with FFA and stuff, how many times, like, may I only go twice a year or two, or how does that say?
Well, they, their, their things are a little bit different, cause they have like a state convention, and I know I had kids involved with the national convention. They've got a lot of different meetings. Those aren't really clinics, those are organizational things that they, for the most part, they have to attend. So I don't, not the idea that we put a limit on, on those. We have gone so far as to talk about trying to put on a little bit of a rotation basis where you're not going to everything every year, so.
That is a just stated decision on how many, how many things are gonna go to, like that, like whether you're gonna go to, how many times you go to the classroom and do things, so.
And they have cut back a lot, but, you know, we had the discussion about, do they really need to go to FFA nationals every single year, start in the middle of the school year? They get a big kid on the radio, it's been their free time. She don't like him.
And not on a national office or anything either.
I mean, that would be a tough one, keeping in mind where they live, that would be a really tough one. So that would probably go to you guys to make that decision. We'd probably be up to make that decision. It would, um, we would catch a lot of flack for that, I have a feeling.
But we don't pay for any of that, do we? Everybody?
Well, no, but the fact is is that they go four days, you know, for one, and then they're on three days for a state, and then all the other little ones that they do throughout the school year.
It does cost us, we decided that...
Oh, fight, yeah.
Pay for FFA and FCC LA, and that's tough.
When you have situations where you maybe have a state officer or national officer, you're really unusual with a state officer, and of course, they attend national convention and that, and, you know, if the kids are gonna participate in that thing and they get that far, I think, you know, we really want to try to support them and, you know, make that work for them.
Do we need to make this a policy statement?
I don't, I don't think you have to vote on it. I think it's ours. Okay, discuss open house plan for touring the old building. We're gonna do that on the 11th, which is Thursday, and I think two to seven, correct? And that's not just for parents, that's for anybody that wants to come to it. And is there something in the paper? Gonna be in the paper? I put something in there, I think the last two weeks, it was supposed to be in there, and then I put, I put a thing on the website. Okay. I didn't see, I look, I...
I didn't see it on the page.
I was looking for it. Did you see it?
Mm-hmm.
I did not see it, so I must, must have, so, okay. I think it was on front, front page, I think, at least one week ago.
It was in the discussion, school board stuff.
No, it was a little...
It was a separate, it was kind of a long, narrow part where it got put in there, I think, if I remember it correctly. Okay, so I looked, I did, I see. Okay, so some of you guys are gonna be working, obviously. And you guys are gonna be missing some time, and we do all this, this interviewing of superintendents and things like that, so you guys are gonna work, and maybe you guys should come later, if you get back, maybe like you get off work or something, and I can be there at two o'clock, and some of the, you other people can be there at two o'clock, and who can be there at two? I can.
I can.
Jay, if you don't have, if you don't have a funeral or something.
I can work later too, you know, I think that's over.
So, if we're there at two, then we can conduct it, and what we're doing are... Is everybody taking a tour over there? I think it's just the people that were on that committee, right? So we'll take a tour with you today when we both were out walking, and show you all the things up there. And then those of us that started too, if you have something to do in the evening, will the other people take over that come later, if that's all right?
We go in groups of two and have three different groups.
We even have different groups. Depends on how many people want to go, you know, it could be... You can take people around individually, or, you know, you, we can just say, anybody wants to go, we're taking them now, do that every 15 minutes or something like that. Or maybe just put a sign up, if you want to tour, here's where we meet or something, so. They could put it, they would come at the door by my office, so, you know, kind of congregate there. Okay.
You might have people, you know, if it's full in here, it won't be full right at two o'clock, but the closer you get to the four and the five, ten in there, it gets kind of full in there, so people are sitting around, those will be the people that will not want really late, or perhaps just want to take them immediately, cause sometimes there's a line for a few of those teachers.
So, and we have the rooms open, the rooms will all be open. And maybe we keep the door closed when we go in the house, if you want to wander up there by themselves.
Is there something going on at school that day?
Conferences.
Which is that, conferences?
Conferences, I think.
There for two, so.
Yes, Friday, Saturday.
I can come at four.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll be, I'm a big house, I'll be, I'll let you know.
Okay. Yeah, I can come anytime, just let me know when you want me here.
Any other discussion there? Initial draft of school calendar. We included a copy of that. It's very similar to what we've utilized for our calendar the last couple of years, of course, you always have some small changes, you know, depending on when Christmas vacation or Christmas day is and New Year's, so that makes you move things a little bit, and also Easter gets moved around, although that doesn't really affect the days. One of the things I did want to mention, if you look at August, I was originally planning on not starting with the kids until probably the 18th, or, you know, actually the 22nd, I think. Here about three weeks ago, I was invited to attend a workshop over at Wausau. The Wausau Board extended an invitation to the area superintendent's school, and it was about, actually, it was a presentation on active shooter, dealing with school safety and that. And they brought a guy out from Sioux City Police Department, and I was extremely impressed with his presentation, and the things he talked about, I think there's some things that we need to probably reevaluate in our safety plan, how we want to handle some things. So I visited with Dave Hamm and also Stephanie Peterson, and Dave contacted this individual, and he would be available to come out on the 12th of August. So I kind of restructured things a little bit. We would, we would start with the teachers on the 12th as a day, where we would do that workshop in the morning, and then we'd use the afternoon for, you know, teachers would work in their rooms, and then on the Monday and Tuesday, the 15th and 16th would be staff days, where we have all our meetings and that type of thing, and start with the kids on the, on the 17th. But, you know, my suggestion is we do, we do have our staff go through that, that workshop, cause it, it was very good. It was actually, there was, it was a three hour lecture, is what I went to, and it didn't seem like three hours, I'll tell you that, they did just a really good job with it. And then in the afternoon, and we weren't invited to participate in this, but they, they had the Wausau faculty and Bloomfield faculty there, and then after, after lunch, what they did is they took the Wausau faculty, I think they broke them into three rooms, and they went through some scenarios, like three different scenarios of the active shooter. And then when he got there, they went over to Bloomfield, they did the same thing with their staff over there, so. We will set it up, kind of the same thing here, where he will probably, he'll do the workshop, at least the talk today, but I think the way it would work best, we did the workshop here, right away in the morning, like eight fifteen start, or eight o'clock, whatever. We get done here after like three hours, we can do it with our staff right here, and then he would go to Osmond in the afternoon, and then to Creighton in the afternoon, and do a similar thing there, so. It'll, it'll cost us, I think, around $1,200 each, for each school, something like that, to do it. So anyway, I, I suggest participating in that. The only other thing that I, right now, I'm not comfortable with, the last day of school, I've got Mark as the 19th, that is state track weekend, usually we don't do anything. We don't have a full day, we might move that to the 22nd, just take 19th as a non-contract day or something. As I indicated in the, in your board packet there, I have not put this out to the staff yet, I will do that following the meeting now, and see if they have any other suggestions.
That would just affect the teachers, right, and it would affect the students, you have to leave on the 18th, right?
Yeah, right now, for the most part, it wouldn't, and, you know, it would depend on who we have qualified for state track. We'll have some coaches going, we know that, and they, they can make that, I mean, it's mostly just finishing up, they can do that.
Could you just believe that the 19th, and if you're really coaching or something, that they're coming whenever they want to and finish the day out?
It might, might be a possibility, yeah.
They're usually done anyway.
But I don't know, it's, when you, when you start putting it together, you're trying to come up with 179 student days, which is, I think, in our policy book, and 185 contract days, which there, you know, if you've got six days, you gotta have staff development, and when you start moving one thing, it affects the other one, so it's not always easy to make things juggle out right, but we will come up with a finalized one. I hope to have it by next month. Have it pretty much finalized when it will work. Okay?
Just yours later.
Any other questions on that? Discuss bringing new computers for students. Send a sheet around. When we were doing the budget this year in August, I had asked Mr. Salz to put together a list of things that we might possibly need, and this is what he gave me at that time, and that's basically what I used to come up with the budget items for technology. I'm not saying necessarily we end up going this direction, but last year, we had purchased new laptop computers for the staff, it was with the idea that this year would come back and try and make sure we updated, you know, student computers and that type of thing, and I think our laptops that we're using for the students are, you know, they're holding up very, very well. We're not gonna have to go in and do a mass buy, replace all of them. We're gonna try to add some to the iPads over the elementary, and one of the things, we do have trouble keeping up with a little bit, is projectors, and maybe those have tendency to ball burnout, wear out, those types of things, but this is probably a maximum amount of scenario that we'll, we'll probably end up looking at.
Do you have an extra sheet I can look at?
I will come back, you know, probably next month again, maybe with a, with a changed idea on this. At the time being, the money we have budgeted for this will probably be used to spend for the category two money, and we get that money back, and we'll have this money to spend on computers.
Do we need grants for any of this?
Not for, not for this, there's, well, we've got, we have a REIT, a REIT grant, which is just under $16,000 this year, I think, and we will spend that, move towards technology. That's a pretty much...
That's really about...
Forty-five.
Six to seven total will be about $50,000.
The REIT grants, probably my favorite grant of all of the gift, because they, they just say spend it, and tell them, tell them you spent it, and that's about it. Don't really tell them what you spent it on, I don't think, do you? I'm a G.
Nope.
Just they want to know if you spent it?
Why is the school so big on Apple, when probably 80% of the workforce is HP?
Because most of the education stuff is Apple, probably, yeah. And I, I think, we should have Mr. Salz here to answer those. His dad probably answers.
And it's viruses, that's a big one.
What's that? They have built in virus protection.
You don't have the virus problem.
Kids taking stuff home and back and forth, and when you used to have disk, you know, drives and paper and USB ports, and you can have a virus much easier on a few...
I had that same question at Apple, I was in Omaha, and asked them, and they said, the other thing is, most teachers are hooked up with Apple, so if you have any homework, they can send it right to your computer, like Nelson College, but I think that there is some of that that goes on in high school, isn't there?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because a lot of them use Google now, so that just gives sense of the cloud anyway. It's just a lot of the transporting of the USB ports back and forth from home, cause that's what they use now, they don't lose.
We originally went with Apple, and, uh, video production and those types of things, with the garage band and that, for kids, you know, get them, use it, and do different things, presentations and that type of thing. We're probably better on that. And I always find that an interesting question personally, Jason, because I use, I have an Apple laptop of my own, and I also have one from the school. I've got a PC sitting on my desk, and I, it doesn't bother me at all which one I'm having on.
Were any bids gotten for PCs at all, just to see a price comparison?
What's that?
Were any, just any bids for this type of equipment, I guess, for PCs, just for a price comparison?
The, the PCs might be a little less expansive for some of the stuff that you can do. But, you know, we, we kind of committed to Apple, and at that time, and I think, we've had awfully good luck.
Yeah, I mean, they're good stuff, I was just curious.
Well, then you can put Windows on these, and you can go back and forth in between, like mine goes back and forth in between.
I know one time, I don't know how he accessed, my son threw my HP at home, was trying to get on something, but he was having heck of a time, cause I think it was a different type of Word document or something. I don't know much about it, I just, just curious if I want to use them.
So you're looking to do this?
Probably next month, I'll bring something back, a little more formal, to what we're probably actually going to purchase. And so this was put together this summer.
They won't have sense then.
Will there be a loss over that from all this? Are there gonna be disposing of, or getting, they got a place to go?
Depending what we end up with, we might have a little bit out of that. I would say that's probably a maximum of what we would spend, Mike.
Sound like some of those other ones were gonna go around.
Right.
We would move some eggs around.
They're short on stuff over there.
Yes, it's nice to have this early like this. That's good. Any other discussion on this? Discuss co-op activities. Like you and your committee had a meeting with Osmond, what else to talk about?
Not much to discuss, I don't think.
Okay.
They listened to us, and that was about it. They didn't have much, much interest, I don't think, or I didn't get anything out, but they did. They told us basically the same thing Creighton told us, if we don't have enough kids for football, we can take them over, and they can play with them if they want to. That was really the only thing they said they were, had any interest in. They said they got a lot of junior high kids right now that are really good at football, and they wouldn't do that to their coach after what he's, the time he's put in with those kids, to move them up to an 11 man or whatever.
And they said they had a lot of talent coming, so.
Towards 7 years, we could...
The only thing they were interested in was local, is that right? They were still, they were very interested in, no, they weren't interested in...
Wrestling, they had two kids, they said, he would definitely like to do something wrestling, but they don't want to do anything, anyway, so...
They don't want to open it up for anything else.
Right.
So the parents wouldn't go for it. So, yeah, we basically got nothing.
So basically, we have nothing, no, anywhere.
You never talked to Creighton again?
I think Cory contacted him, and I think it was kind of the same thing, there might be interest in doing some junior high, but it's not.
They, they say that they don't have any problems, but yet they canceled some of the reserve meetings, cause they don't have any kids to do that.
Why can't we have a meeting with the board again to talk about it, or, why can't, you can't have both boards join all of us?
You can, but you have to have a special meeting. But I will see in the future. I hope that these people understand that, that we're the ones that are probably hurting the board now, and I said, I've said this before, and what, after we go through four years or so here, we're not gonna need anybody then, and so they need to have, be a little more foresight, in my opinion. And, because when they come around and say, we want to, we want to come with you guys, we're gonna say, I don't, I don't think we need, you can bring your kids over here. We'll say the same thing, that you can bring your kids over here, but...
At that time, we're gonna have to look at our futures, where our youngers are, and see whether we're gonna...
But don't we need to do something for these junior high football kids, at least? So next year, they've got a program to participate in, or you're just gonna leave and hide, right?
I don't know.
Like you go to Creighton or go to Osmond.
Right.
What else can you do?
Well, no, that's what I'm saying. We need to go to one or...
See, I don't think Creighton's gonna do it, cause they're into this, they want to do this survey, you know, they're trying to figure out what to ask on the survey, and it's academics and sports and the whole works, and they're just starting over in square one, until they get that survey out and find out what their patrons want, I don't think they're gonna make any decisions.
I can ask the junior high boys, keeping in mind that they could change their mind, just like they did before, but just see how many we have, because if you're toying with the number 10 again, inevitably, we have kids on the failing list, and that's just the way it is, and, you know, we try to get them off there, but...
Should we send something over to the parents and say, if we don't have enough kids here, would you be willing to take your...
I, I would find out how many we have first, and then, and then send that home. I mean, we could transport them, and most, I mean, they would probably be late getting back, or something, but...
Parents are gonna have to pick up their kids, so...
And explain that this could be the only option for your kids, because I, I kind of in the, in the agreement with Vicki, that if they don't have anything, we could lose those kids.
Well, you could, you could...
They're gonna go somewhere, we're there in some place to do this.
Well, you could potentially lose them by saying that I can take my son to Osmond if he wants to play football at 2:50 or whatever time it is, and he may just say, well, why don't I just go to school over here? You know, there, there's, there's some people that may do that, you know?
The majority of them are still gonna just stay here.
That's our, that's our problem the whole time. We've said that, that's why we try to do these things, and nobody wants to do anything with us, then I don't want to do.
Yeah, I don't know what we do either. And I'm sure the parents are already aware of this, but by notifying them and questioning them, it might, they might start putting pressure on each other to get other kids out.
They might.
If you get two or three more out, maybe that's all the problem.
Yeah, I think we need to get a letter out there at least, and say, this is our dilemma, and would you be willing to pick up your kids, you know, if they were... He's gotta talk to Creighton first.
I didn't meet him today, I gotta tell him that we got a test. Make sure that they do the review, right here, so...
They got a whole bunch in the classroom?
Yeah. All those great, their kids in there. Yeah, it's coming in here. I got it.
It seems like it'd be better to have sent it home and let the kids discuss these questions with their parents, versus just ask the kids on their own, and the kid, ah, maybe ideally, maybe I don't...
But what if we have, what if you have 12 kids, though? I mean, can we do it with 12? I don't know. I don't believe it. You tell me what you want me to do, and we'll do it. I just...
I'd like to have the parents involved.
I do, I think a letter needs, I mean, we can, you can poll the kids and see how many want to go out, but... And I could put that in the letter with the information that this is some of the kids... And there again, we've done that before, and we're only, and I've looked at half of what you actually say they're going to go out. But if we send a letter with the parents and ask them to reply, would you be willing to, you know, if we have to go to Osmond or Creighton, whichever school, would you be willing to pick up your child after?
Or the parents, can we talk to them then?
You can talk to them wherever you want.
I don't know where the kids are, but I mean, can you talk to them personally, or whatever? I don't know which teacher I'm gonna talk to.
No, he meant the parents.
The parents now. I think it'd be better off having, just, if you're gonna do that, just have a special meeting for just the parents to come in and talk.
We'll come up with some kind of letter in, in fact, to the next meeting.
I would ask them first if they want, if they thought their kid would go out football, if we have enough kids, and play. Find out how many we would have if we had it here. And then if we don't have enough to have it here, this will be the second option, would they be willing?
Well, I guess we're gonna have to get going on because, because.
Well, junior high, you don't have to do anything with the university.
I know, but we, I mean.
But scheduling, scheduling stuff.
You know, if, if you wanna do that, if you're gonna put this in there, you can do it pretty soon.
Yeah, I'd do it.
Because we have a bunch of special meetings and we can put that in.
Do you want me?
Special meeting.
It looks like you just show one to you.
Just do a letter and show talk or whatever.
I can, I'll email it to Mr. Altman, you can email it to you guys.
Okay.
When was that you talked to them last? Curious.
Creighton?
Yeah.
Um, we didn't end up having to talk to him about the calendar, because I go, that was supposed to be Wednesday, but he was here for the wrestling week. And he said he would, they'd take our kids for junior high football. But at least they contacted us. I know. And said they would take our kids. It is an opportunity, it's something for them to do.
I talked to Cory Saturday, he said he didn't know anything yet.
Yeah.
Mrs. Peterson was planning on coming over last Wednesday, and then with the school, that never happened, we were hoping to talk a little bit about it then, so maybe. I think she still wants to come over and talk about.
Mrs. Forger?
But we need to start on this other deal, like, find out what we.
She sees, she, we need to get back to her.
Yeah, like what she sees and she sees this.
Yeah.
So how long is it gonna take you to poll all these kids? Could you have something done by like next Monday when we have that special meeting?
I'm going to pee today, and we should be done by three o'clock.
Okay. So that, that way we can decide something on that special meeting.
Do you want me to call over and see if it's ready?
No, I'm gonna do it right now.
I hear you talking.
Yeah, we're gonna have to, if we do send up to Creighton or Osmond, we're gonna cancel our schedule.
Yeah, this is being voted on. Are the calendars?
They won't change, they're just gonna have a lot more kids.
You don't have, you don't have any classification around or any of that of junior high?
And if they won't, yeah, they won't change.
But if, if they know that, they don't have to buy some extra uniforms.
I, I talked to somebody there earlier and they said it was gonna start like.
And now.
They probably don't have as many out either.
Right.
And either one of those teams may wanna add.
I didn't know if they were coming to this room or if they wanted some other room to work out for themselves.
We just need those.
Okay, I just.
Well, yeah, and that's the whole other side of that.
That's the one that they should have me in, and, and just, at least in one of them there, because I need a clock.
They have more kids than listening.
You can sit with them later.
I will talk to them today, we're gonna let it, we have this waiting for us, so I'll, you can email it to you guys.
Okay, are we done with that one?
It doesn't mean they're gonna let them play, just because they go over there.
True. Uh, discuss superintendent's search progress and plans. Oh, did I skip something? No? Okay. Okay, so we, we opened up the envelopes. Eleven, ready?
Eleven, yeah. Sent out, those were, yeah, those out that afternoon.
Okay. I got those back because I typed the wrong email address on, so I sent it the next morning, so.
And those are due Friday, I think.
Yeah, um, tell the kids that I have the window open for the test review.
Right.
If they have any questions, we'll open those tomorrow and the test will be on Wednesday.
Okay.
We sent them all number.
Okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay.
As we opened them, I just gave the number and they weren't.
Okay.
Um, I was second, I kinda went through all these already, I looked at them and I gave each one, I just wrote down the number, put that person's name beside it, where they're at, what their position is right now, maybe how long they've been there. For each person, do you want us to run copies of that and make note pad for all of this when we start talking about this? We've got a piece of paper that ties the name with the number, where they're at, and then the rest of it's blank, so we can make notes. Everybody's got, because we're just looking at it as a number between us. For me, it'd be tough to remember who's number one or who's number two, but if you have a name to go with that number and an address or a town.
But then again, that, that has to be kept private.
Right.
So it was, is it all right for us to do it that way, just so we know?
The idea of the number, so you're not, give, you don't have to give the names out until you're final, you're finalists, in case, you know, they, the applicants maybe didn't want.
They were protecting them.
They were protecting them, yes.
Okay. So that, that's fine with me, as long as, is that legal to do that?
I think.
Okay.
Just have to refer to them by their number.
Right.
Okay.
And try not to be of the town that they're at.
Right, right.
Just use the number. So. So I kinda went through and did that already, so I can get, I don't know if they can make something up before Monday.
Okay. So again, Friday, they have to go back or in the mail, I assume, so we can probably get it by Monday. Monday, we go, we're gonna go through these by number and cut the number down to, do we need to, do we need to call any more references or anything like that?
Well, we should probably go through these again, well, there's a lot of references with a lot of these. I don't know if everyone had references in here, no, I don't know.
Applications and that acknowledgement, which gives their.
There's a lot of references in here.
We could call, we could call any of the references.
I know. These guys, a lot of these guys just have a file of reference and they just mailed it to whoever they.
We could call any of these references and have no problem. We can't go, or I don't think morally we should go out and start calling other people in town until we have their permission, which is on that, on that, uh, an application. Okay?
I can go through here and see how many of those don't have written applications and if we wanted to call them, if you do that. Call if you even have, but like, the majority of these have applications or references with. I know there's not a lot of time we're talking here. But half those people don't know, maybe all of them, some of those might not send applications back.
Right.
Can you wait till you get the application and then do some calling? I mean, you might be calling on five candidates that aren't even sending us an application. I'm just thinking if you wasted, could be wasting some time on some of those.
Deadline is Friday.
I know.
Especially we don't have a lot of time to do that.
I know, some of that I don't know if how we can avoid.
We just have to do.
The only thing that concerns me is, is the one gentleman who had four or five references from two thousand ten.
You know, way back.
I play some fresher ones than that.
Yeah.
Then he doesn't have any?
Yeah, they may, you know, when you get the application back, they may have some updated ones on there too, it's hard to say. You could contact them at that point, you know, if you had to.
Right.
They would have all, I mean, you wouldn't have all that left to do at that time.
Personally, I could get that before right now. Just looking through here.
Um. So what committee, you, who have you been working with on this, just you?
I just took him home after we opened, well, after he does the, everything emailed out, I took him home. Do you wanna get together and go through these and see if we think we should make some phone calls?
Do we have a committee that should be doing that?
They all told me it was me and you. When you were here.
I'm trying to think what are, what committee that, we gotta list the committee then here somewhere.
Yeah, I gotta, I have somewhere. It was him.
It's in the minutes. Now, it's in the minutes of the last meeting, we, of course, pre-organized, we set up.
It's not in last month's. It's right after, it's right after Rich's.
Two or three pages back.
Right. Your organization board, board committee assignments, transportation, building and grounds, negotiations, budget, merit, and, and. Current construction assessment, policy, procedures, safety, food improvement, government relations. Which one to follow over there? Should we just have the officer do it? Three of us do it?
Okay.
Okay? And then we can decide who we wanna call and all that kinda stuff. We'll probably have some, some time this week we can get together.
We have a lot of things to do today, if we just wanna go through them quick and see what we've got and how many phone calls we think we're gonna have tonight.
Yeah, that's fine. So we'll work on that. Um. Okay, back to where we're. Um. So again, Friday they'll be back, next Monday we're gonna try to decide the four. Okay, we need to go over those questions that we're gonna ask, I think we all got that from our special meeting we had before. Do you guys all have those notes? The one that starts like this. I know you guys got a lot of stuff. This starts out. Things included here, and it has the, the application form in here, right? And then it has, uh, stupid. Okay. References, check questions, and then superintendent interview questions, I think it's the last thing.
So these are over and ask if we called references.
Right. Okay, superintendent interview questions. Uh, let's go through these and see if there's something we wanna add, something we wanna take off. This is a lot of things to ask, I think it would be probably too many. Well, Mr.'s job interesting to you? Or why did you apply to this job, for this job? I think that's a pretty important one. What are your strengths and weaknesses because of the potential superintendent? Just some of your accomplishments as an administrator?
Hell, there's one that actually won't be just certificate till this summer.
And that's a provisional, I think, is that what he said? I think we have so many, you mentioned the person for this job. How do you do the recreation, how do you relax, why they're older board or as superintendent? Philosophy, evaluating authority, how do you mean accountability? Seen you those so far that you wanna eliminate?
Can you ask, can you ask number five?
Why you can't?
What is it? What is it?
Yeah.
No, I haven't answered.
What do you do for, how do you relax, what do you do for recreation?
How do you relax?
I think you can ask any of them, first of all.
Did these come from GNSB?
Uh.
I can think of some of these, or some of our own. Sorry, nothing bothers me, I presume.
If you like to shop, this probably is gonna be a great place for you. It's a good place to shop, really. Good shopping.
Does that help you relax?
It does.
Something I don't know if we can ask about is their family, kids, marital status.
And.
You can't ask if they're married.
How old they are.
How, how old they are, no, those things you cannot ask.
Could you ask whether they will be coming by themselves or somebody with them?
Do they want?
If they would make, come here by themselves, or?
I think you can, you can ask if they would be moving.
We can't.
I wouldn't say by yourself or with a family. Because then you're basically asking, are you married or what are your questions? Marital status, whatever.
So we can't even really make that mandatory, that they have to live here?
They just like.
We can require delivery.
You can't make us family.
You can't require the family to live in this.
And oftentimes during interviews, they will say things.
Sure.
They will answer the kinda questions that, yeah, they'll talk about their family or their, not always.
I'll, I'll give you a personal example, when, when I interviewed here, you know, I provided answers for all the questions the board asked, and I went home and they, when they called and offered me the position, I specifically asked or told them, you know, to understand that Maggie would not be moving here, we would try to do what we could on weekends or whatever. I actually came back another day and met with Alden, Krista, and I wanna say John Anderson, I think. I'm not gonna, I'm able to committee three board members to sit down with them. Because I don't think from, from their questions, I don't think they gathered what I had, you know, what, what my plans were at that time.
Where's the deal off here? Nine, how would you work with the principal? That's a difficult. First of all, anything, anything the good principal does, are you involved in teaching negotiation? What do you see as a superintendent's role and process? Are you familiar with the financial accounting system, budgets, have, have you done a school budget before? How do a superintendent of Board of Education encourage great teaching? How do you, what about establishing good public relations in the community? What is the most of the first step a superintendent should take? Communication methods that you use between the school and community, how do schools approve? How are you at decision making? Have you dealt with cooperating activities with school, atmosphere, staff, other schools? What is your ideal size of school to work with? Have you dealt with technology, discuss a personal, difficult personal problem to deal with, how to solve it? Again, we won't have to have these ready until we do the actual interview.
Right, and somebody's may, be irrelevant to some people, you know, if they've been superintendent for ten, fifteen years, you probably wanna ask if they get a budget before, you know? But if they're new.
Well, superintendent, that's true.
Oh, really?
That's true. The bookkeeper does it in some schools. Well, have a fear.
They're pretty adamant about that.
How do you work with your secretary?
How do you work with a bar secretary?
Now, twenty-two, Jason said, take out person, personnel problem. What kinda difficulty?
Well, personnel, personnel, yeah, personnel, you'd be okay. I read, sorry, I read personal, sorry, my bad.
Anyway, um.
But yeah, I read.
Look, this will over studied, if you wanna put some together, it seems kinda long to me.
It seems long, but they're all good questions.
Right.
That we need an answer to.
Aren't fourteen and sixteen about the same question?
They can be consolidated in one kinda.
They could consolidate one.
And sometimes they're gonna, you ask one question, they might answer two or three with, with answering one you asked. See, might be able to skip over some.
What communication methods would you use between the school and the community to establish good public relations? You do it that way? And put the other?
Do you mean we could combine nine and ten also? I interviewed a, a Broken Bone, it was a seven hour principal interview.
What?
Took a seven hours interview for a principal job.
We're doing four, two, and so.
I know, I'm just saying it's the, I mean, this is how many.
So I took out number fourteen and I added that in. I put, what communications would you use between the school and community to establish good public relations? What's one, what did you say, Vicki?
Um, nine and ten. Could be combined.
Good things a principal does and how do you, uh, work with them? And how is your working relationship with principals in the past or something like that? Somebody else says. Just get rid of mine, maybe?
Yeah. I tried little ten.
Would you care for some input?
Yeah.
I'd leave them both. Cause I, as I look at those, I would, I would answer those two completely.
Like what different?
Yeah. What about fifteen and seventeen?
Okay.
Okay. You wanna know the first thing they do though?
Fifteen is the, the first thing they do, and seventeen is the broad philosophy.
Yeah.
Keep doing things.
Keep both.
I don't, I think these'll go through, you have to throw them faster.
Three minutes of questions, you're looking at an hour.
And some of them, it won't take long and some of them will be free.
We have a new teacher here too, we're doing that, so.
Is there any of them we don't have here that they're standing out, that we are missing?
What's your intentions with your family? What's your intentions with your family?
Again, we could go over this on Monday again.
And we could change a little bit in between, you know, if we ever you want, we find out.
Well, I just would not do that. I would assume that they were all the same. Okay, you all right with that?
I was gonna say, you may find, I, somebody mentioned to you, that they may answer a couple of questions at one time. We find that quite often, teachers when we interview them, and all they said, oh, you've already answered that. You know, there might be two or three of them, you're close question, they're already answered.
And they're gonna probably wanna ask us some questions too, are we gonna handle that?
Close session.
No, I mean, there's, some of those could, uh, could all probably answer.
They might, sometimes they ask you questions, I should say others, but, you know, sometimes they ask you questions about, what do you think is the best thing about your school? I can remember that coming from an applicant.
They might ask you a financial question, you know, what do you think, how's your district's financial status? You probably have some type of an answer.
They'll probably have gone through the state report card.
Yeah.
If they're smart, they would have. They may ask questions like that.
What would that?
The state report card.
Okay. So would you refer those questions to you then?
Well, when we walk around, I'm gonna guess that they'll, those are kinda things, I'm gonna wanna know, how involved are they in the curriculum?
I'm just, I mean, we don't wanna look stupid to them, they ask a question, they all, we say, Patty, you say, I don't know.
We do that all by ourselves.
It's all up to them.
Okay, so again, Wednesday, or next Monday, make sure that you look those over, otherwise.
As far as, I mean, you had mentioned having a salary, kind of an area, what we wanna look at. Do we need to talk about that, or do we have until we get to next week, or we get together and get it down the board? See those four are, or they're, they just, you know, and kinda where they would fit into a salary versus maybe all of them? Or do we need to be doing something now?
Well, under application, we ask them, aren't they, what they're currently making? You have a quite a big jump path.
I get an idea from that, where do you kinda wanna go?
Probably depends how qualified or how great a thing you can it is too.
And if they've never been a superintendent before, that's gonna, you know.
Probably should be down.
I mean, I don't know who's all in there, I mean, I know some, but I don't know all the people in there. So if they've, if they're trying to make that step from the principal to the superintendent, see, they're not gonna say, you know, fifty thousand dollars, I would think.
Well, there's some that have been superintendents that aren't right now. So they've been out a while, so did they take a step back because of that, or?
Normally, probably they would.
You gotta, wanna talk to them and say, this is what we're offering. And they might say, well, I'd like to have your job, and I'm gonna do that. And they might say.
Well, you'll, you'll go through negotiations, think, well, if you've got an idea of what you'll pay, and they have an idea of what they want, you sit down.
You do that when you bring the four in, or do you do that after you offer it to them?
After you offer it, you get in the negotiations. I mean, if you're, if you're terribly far away from what they expect, they're not gonna accept it. And if they, if you're close and you offer it, they may accept it with the idea that we can arrive at a.
So that's kinda done over the phone then? When you call them and tell them, hey?
Well, you select, you might be able to do it over the phone, you might wanna be with them.
So if they put like a certain wage that they make, can you ask them if they're willing to get a cut? Can you ask that or not?
What was that again?
Like you say, if they make a hundred thousand dollars, and say, we would have a ninety thousand to come here?
Well, you can tell them what you're willing to pay.
I mean, just to get a field form?
When they write down how much they make though, they're not gonna take a huge, I mean, if they're, a hundred and fifty thousand, they're probably, they, they already know how much he makes, because you can get that information.
If they're superintendent now, you can get on the Nebraska Department of Education website and see what they're making. You'll have a pretty good idea. Now, if they're not a superintendent right now, you're not gonna know that.
So is there a difference between somebody that has the amount of experience that you got versus hiring somebody that's gonna come in a first year superintendent?
Not normally.
They're gonna start right off where Mr. Al's at right now.
You gotta stay above Patty.
Why?
Oh.
Why is that?
That's just kinda the way the business works.
Your business is messed up.
I wouldn't think we'd start at the same reason, and he's been here seven years.
Well, that's true, but you don't start a mill over either, you don't know, but.
Experience and, well, yeah, but, but you do have to stick, keep them ahead of you, I mean.
Oh, sure.
And they're not that far apart.
We're further than you think.
You're feeling your raise getting smaller.
So I am getting one? Well, I gotta be higher first.
Do you guys have a schedule when you're gonna interview them or anything like that? Any formal schedule or dates picked out?
Yeah.
Last, last day of February, first day of March for the interviews.
For the interviews?
Twenty ninth and first, yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah, well, we can answer more of these questions as we go along and learn things about people. Who we had done talking to. How many meetings are we gonna have next week?
Well, we're, we're gonna have one Monday, but we, it may be a long meeting, we might have to get everything ready to go over here.
Yeah, I think Monday, the fifteenth, and then if we need to go to a close session or whatnot, I mean, have everything the way it needs to be. Questions to.
You, you've got another week, although I think you'll be going.
The week after. The twenty.
You could still, I mean, the rest of the board, you could have.
You should have a special meeting, I guess, yeah.
Do some of that stuff if you needed to.
Let's, um, we're gonna go on something new. Um, let's talk, talk about how we're gonna.
What do you wanna, oh, we're gonna do that.
We're gonna do that, do that, us three.
When are we gonna, what time do we meet Monday? Five thirty? Or what time do we meet?
Five thirty, he needs to go five thirty, they got one.
Let's talk about how we're gonna do this interview. Because, the way I understand it, we were talking so far is that we were gonna, it would be the whole board, we would bring in the person we're gonna interview. We would interview and ask them all our questions, and they would ask their questions of us. And then we would have some people, some teachers and some community members that would also interview in front of us. They would be asking the questions. This would not be open to the public, this would be, um, that committee of people asking questions.
Okay, it, it's during a public meeting that you can limit to, you'll let ask questions, I believe. Is that what you're saying?
So I, I don't want, I don't want people from the public asking questions.
Right, and you can, you could call on people, or I believe have a pre-arrangement, you know that you've got, say, three people out here that are gonna ask questions, you know who they are. You can say, okay, you have Mr. So and So, you have questions or whatever, you can write.
Right.
As long as you've got that, you know who they are, you don't have to go up, say, John Doe in the back corner, he doesn't have three questions.
We're not gonna have public comment, that's me.
Right.
Right, it's gonna be, it's gonna be members of the public and members of the staff that ask questions, but it's not. And members of the public can come and observe, but they cannot participate in the.
And I think you, during the meeting, you just announced that, you know, the board, um, has involved some of the community members and staff, um, in the interview process, and they will be asking questions. Those, those specific people will be asking questions.
Yeah.
I don't think that'd be wrong.
Um.
There's some teachers that they want?
Well, we've talked a little bit about, I, I've talked to Jim Kanauski, and we don't, you don't have to take these people necessarily. Um, Jackie King said that she would, um, would do anything to help. I didn't specifically ask her about that. Um, Kevin Langford, I talked to him, again, I don't know. How much, some of these people can get off time to do this. I have those, those are three people that I've talked to.
I had one call me, wanted to know how they got on that committee.
Who's that?
Rich Hudson. It was in the paper, he wanted to be on the community committee.
Is there a selection process for that, for who you select to ask the questions?
What?
Will it be a selection process, or who decides who is on that committee to ask the questions?
We're picking them right now.
Okay, dude, alright.
Ask them, if they will be on it.
Okay.
Alright. I think that, I mean, he's somebody that's more rural, instead of just, all these guys are town people.
Right.
His business.
He's also has a wife that's on the, on the school, or, or, I mean, the teachers here.
Um, I can give you some of the people we ask when we need things.
Right.
Liz Fromm, she's very good. And you'll have to help me with.
Liz, Liz, yeah.
That's Wyatt's wife.
I can remember her name.
Liz.
Liz.
And, um, I mean, she volunteers her husband if, if she can't. Um, I'm trying to go through my list here. She's one we ask, um, and Al is very good about, um, helping when we need help at school.
She's a very curious, right?
About, uh, Bill Michaels.
What's she gonna do, have one of them driving around you?
Yeah.
Somebody from the hospital or a banner?
Is Kevin on the board, or is he down on the board anymore?
He used to be in the hospital board, I don't know if he still is or not.
I don't know who on that board anymore, if there is a hospital board. Right, so I don't know, but maybe. Okay, that's some people that we can, teachers?
Should we, I reckon I really wanna come up with that.
I would say three. Teachers, two or three, what do you think? Four? Four?
Probably two elementary, two high school.
Yeah, oh, a middle, maybe a middle school there. So you're thinking Dean maybe?
Um, Dean? Uh, Deb? She's gonna want some of the things, it's been here for a while, so they kinda get the feel, and we have a lot of movies. Um, Robin, he's kinda in that middle group.
Robin Reed?
Robin Reed, he's been here a long time. Sorry.
He doesn't appear, makes me mad.
I know, but he's, he's taught here for a long time.
Who's your other one?
Um, who was I thinking of being, Deb for the title, um.
Really need an elementary teacher?
Yeah.
Shirley Beyonce?
Uh, Shirley or Ann would probably be the two. You think you'd get a huge perspective, we have a really good language there.
But, you know, when Mr. Al did it, there was two students, juniors, senior. Maybe went around, like when you take them around to school and stuff, that's what they did.
We can, we can decide on who we're gonna have at that next meeting. Um, I would like to share with them the questions that we're gonna ask. And then I would like them, I would like to see the questions that they're gonna ask. Okay? That doesn't necessarily mean that we have to.
So are those the four people that, for the teachers that you want?
Well, I have Dean, Deb, Robin, and Ann or Shirley, I don't know. Who do you want to ask, or?
I haven't asked either one of them, but I know that they would do it, because I think, you know, they have a lot of experience here.
Wait, you decide and let us know by next Monday.
I've got Kevin.
I'd say Ann.
I would too.
Okay.
Okay, oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
We have Kevin on the other side.
If he does.
Oh, Kevin doesn't do it, then yeah, but surely. And so, you want four teachers, so you, you think, tell us people, you want four too there, then, or three, four, what? Tell me.
Do we wanna put a limit on the number of questions that they have? They come up with the best, six to questions.
I would like them to get together and come up with their own list of questions, I just like to look at the questions.
Yeah, I agree.
And I don't necessarily mean we can edit them unless, if we show them what we're gonna ask, then they can ask them. Because I, I would like them to ask community related questions and teacher related questions.
Suppose we could see if they become our Monday meeting at some point?
We could do that.
Maybe they can get together while we're looking at these and come up with their questions, and then we could all get together and.
We could do that, okay? I'm not sure if Jim's around.
Do you think three communities enough, three community members?
Okay, that's fine, we'll be in four teachers, okay? And then, you're gonna put together, you and, and, um, your secretary and who else, and, uh, we're talking about taking them around. Now, gee, okay, you three are gonna take them around the school. Okay, um, taking them around the community, Nancy said she would do that, you said Barney would do that. Um, Bill Michaels, you said maybe, might be a good one to do that.
Barney would fit all we have.
You said your wife Nancy would?
She said she'd do that.
Good, yeah.
That's probably enough, three.
Should I, will she be in on any of this? I mean, she's.
Yeah, she's gonna be on, take.
I know, take them around, but as far as, and maybe she can't, on the interview deal, I know she doesn't really have to answer any questions, but she's worked with more superintendents and probably anyone here. And for most of my time.
She will be there.
She'll be taking notes.
You will take all of it, because I'll be.
Sure.
I'll keep quiet.
But during the interview. You're even taking notes during an interview?
It's a private meeting, she has to.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm not, I will not be writing down what they say, that kinda stuff, but I can take the notes. Says you met, who was here, blah, blah, blah.
It'll be our job on specific things to take our own notes.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have, that I won't do.
Okay, so, um, I'm gonna take Bill off this list, man. So I have Jim, Kanauski, Jackie, Kevin, this one I hand out, and you said maybe three of them.
I would say that those three in the middle probably would work together, where they probably know each other pretty well and do stuff together, don't they? Jackie, Kevin, and Liz, maybe they, they work together as questions.
There's a.
The only trouble I have with Liz and Jackie is they are.
Related.
Well, married.
You want somebody in there that's a student, I think.
That might be an idea.
You might, anybody from Brunswick.
Who could?
Jackie King is.
That's true, she does.
There you, okay.
You could go to a rep, maybe you could go to somebody else. Probably more.
Jim's gonna be gone, I'm not sure if he'll be back by now or not, I don't know, he's on vacation. So you guys are all right if I pick between any of these three?
Should, should we have somebody, it's an older person on there though?
I think so too. I, I, I would like to see Bill there, rather than on the tours, I guess, if he would do it.
And do you want a farmer on there?
The fronds do, they.
Oh, yeah, well, Liz too, for that matter, yes, that's true.
Are we gonna take Jackie and Liz, are we gonna take one of them? I don't think we should have both of them, because they're the same.
I think you need Jackie King on there, just 'cause she's from Brunswick.
Okay.
You need a rizer group.
I'm gonna take Liz though.
Or you need to get a, a marabou or something.
Just because I got a lot of two members in the same family, okay?
Yeah, I don't think we should.
No, no, I see Jackie King or a few and Dick Peters.
I guess.
What their business system you have here?
Jackie, Kevin, Bill, Jim maybe? I'll just see, some of those people might have chosen out, so I'll see what I can do from there. I'll try to three. You think the teachers will all be all right and will substitute for them and all that kinda stuff? Because we're gonna do one in the morning, one in the afternoon, and the next day, one in the morning and one in the afternoon, right? So, okay, so who are we gonna have taking them around again?
How about if we have Nancy Warren and like Danny Johnson?
There you go.
Show houses and stuff. Thanks, thank you.
Probably empty lots. How's this gonna be taking them around?
Some of yours.
I'm not giving one away.
If she could do it, that's her idea.
Nancy Warren and.
Sure, really? Oh, Los?
Yes.
I'm not gonna put these names in a minute.
No.
We don't know yet.
No.
Okay, we're all right on that? And I'll talk to these people and we'll try and get them to come to that next meeting that we have, because we can, and they can come up with their own questions, so we can look at them.
Who's taking them around the school?
Patty and Jan and.
I have a dream. And they would do that after the interview.
Yeah, they would, they'd have been on school.
And then we'll take them out to dinner.
Danny Barnes.
And then, uh, in the afternoon, we'll have our interview, then you guys will take them around again, and then we'll take them down. Serendipity for supper, we'll do the same thing the next day. We'll just draw them out of the hat when we get to the forums.
They're somewhere a long ways away, you might want to tie them slightly.
Right, unless there's somebody that says, I would like to be there at this time because of travel and stuff. Maybe the work itself, also.
Put down the Kroger's. He's been a school board member, he's a farmer, he's a board member.
We all right with that? So, I'll try to finalize that, okay? Um, what else do we need to do?
And you called Serendipity Steve?
Yep, she, uh, lunch is just gonna be whatever she's making that day. And then, uh, the evening, they'll be actually shut down just for us. And she said, yeah, if you, uh, whatever you want. Uh, I just told her she could come up with her own menu, I said, just keep it something simple or meatloaf, whatever, you know. She'll be good, yeah. And she said, yeah, if you wanted to have a bar open, she said that was up to. Well, she just meant for, you know, if they want a glass of wine or whatnot, she would have that available as well.
We need that for negotiations. So, who's gonna get a hold of, well, I guess you, or your coverage, you see that, Josh, you gonna call him, I'll be calling or?
You wouldn't call him?
I can work with him.
That would be fine. And you're gonna take care of the teachers for me?
Yep.
And I'll take care of them, I don't think they're really going to. That's good.
Don't you have to show them your own houses?
You know, all the limited price.
So, will they have subs for these teachers then, for those days?
Yeah.
Isn't that a problem, get four subs?
Wrestling is over.
Yeah, he's under it then.
And.
Okay, our agenda so far for Monday then is to, first, cut this down for Crackedon. Um, and then, um, it would be to.
Possibly meet with the committee.
Meet with the committees here, maybe we can do that first, meet with the committees first, because then we could, so here's our list of things that we're gonna do. And then, uh, you guys can come up with your own questions on it, but we would like to know what you're asking.
We're gonna say they would teach us to.
Right, but they're, these guys are gonna be all together.
Oh, they're all in the one group, okay.
We'll have the, uh, people from town or whichever ones we want. So, everybody will be there on the whole interview.
Right.
But, uh.
Back to Serendipity for a second, I told her twelve thirty and six thirty, so if you have any different times than, other than twelve thirty and six thirty, just let me know.
She'll be open, what time she open for dinner?
Well, so, over the lunch hour, probably gonna be a big deal, she's gonna have us set up for nine to ten people. But for that evening, she's, if it's gonna be other than six thirty, she'd probably wanna know, you know, so, she's gonna have it just set up for us, so.
I would think it might be a little late.
You wanna go later than six thirty?
I would like to go earlier.
Earlier than six thirty? And with the noon one, then also earlier?
The noon's fine, I think we'll have.
Okay, so twelve thirty and six?
Wait a second, forget what time we're gonna start this.
It's gonna be one thirty. It's gonna be like one thirty before you get back here for lunch.
What time we gonna start the interview, nine? We start at nine.
Three hours, then you get up for, well, after twelve.
That'd be twelve, then take them around town. Twelve thirty would be all right. And then we'll, and then, uh, we'll have to start, if we start at.
If you start at one thirty, it'd be, four thirty, it'd be done.
Probably six.
Six is probably all right.
Six, all right. I'll just say half an hour. And we can keep in contact. Having your afternoon start at two o'clock, nine AM.
Right, maybe go three hours.
Five o'clock.
And then head around, half an hour or so, and then head down then. I would say, don't worry about having any drinks.
No, that was just the questions you said then, I don't really know if you wanted, but that's fine.
They all get home at ten thirty.
We start at nine AM, not more.
And there will be some wives, probably some will bring your wives.
Right, right. Four, so we ask them for the interview with, you know, how many people we have with you, because.
Just for reservations. So, if we meet with them first and then send them out with other questions, then we'll go over these. Then when they get done, they can come back at any time.
Right.
Stop what we're doing and meet with them.
And then we can go over their questions with them. And what else, we should be ready to go with that, right? What else we need to do on that next Monday?
What, what do you have, you've got meet, reduce those candidates, meet maybe what else you have, so if I put something in order.
Finalize our final questions.
Right.
We'll have that, but they won't, they'll just be coming up, but there's one thing.
Right.
And then we'll come up with a layout of the way the day's gonna go also on Monday.
Right.
Interview those attending schedule.
We probably won't know who's coming when, because we'll still have to make those phone calls and so.
Right, right. We may, we may say, we'd like to interview, and they may not wanna come, so we may have to.
And, and it's on the applications we get back.
Right.
So, do we wanna go further than four in case, or do you say we're not coming, have a couple of them?
Well, we can put something in order, we can do like five or six any month and put it in order.
That's what my thought.
That way, they don't.
Did Neely decide last week? I don't know where they're now. They would see their view or. Okay, anything else we need to do?
Announce too, they were interviewing.
If we figure anything else, I mean, you can do, make sure that we do it on Monday. Otherwise, get this down, we'll cut some better priority for six maybe and then, uh.
Uh, one thing, I talked about, you know, negotiation, what prices we wanna be, what range we wanna be in, once we get down to those four, and see where they're at. Do we wanna have some numbers off the internet or whatever and what?
Well, um, maybe you would like to have contract, you don't know what your contract, how much your contract is.
I'll have to.
Just pull it out.
I think if you print that thing off the internet with all those surrounding super thin prices. Surrounding that would get his into.
And, and we're interviewing, we probably might wanna have some things with us like, you know, um. Questions that he asks, or they, she asks, whatever. It'll probably be all right if we had some things about, um, the budget, some things about, you know, the things that we used on the budget, and maybe negotiations and, and, uh. Some of that stuff that we should have hanging on the kids, so if they ask questions, we can answer.
Well, they have access, I'm sure it's public knowledge, but is that something they would look on to see what our annual budget was?
Sure.
They can have all of that. They get on the state of schools report, they can get on the Nebraska education.
They may ask questions, or let's just see if we know what's going on.
Well, they're gonna, we're gonna be their boss, they're gonna wanna know what, what we are. So, you guys don't wear your tights, right?
No, I don't wear tights anymore. Okay, anything else we need to do on this?
You know, we had some, uh, oh, future needs or whatever that Corey came up with this, you know, there's a few of those plans, stand year plans or whatever. Could be something we kinda wanna, could show them or have handy or? Look back to find.
Anything that we have last night?
What about like our curriculum? Have anything with that? Those stuff will fall fourteen.
He's not gonna ask us questions about Eric, he might ask Patty or, or you about the curriculum.
Definitely.
He's not gonna expect us to know about the curriculum. I know quite a bit about it, but. I think we're ready to go to, uh, ten, approve. Nebraska Association of School Boards for twenty sixteen seventeen school year, and if you'd like in here, the bill for that is in here.
And that's with a discount to pay it by April one, we just got this bill, I think last week, but just seven, four, one to join again, so.
Thirty-six hundred and seventy-one dollars. If you get two percent off, you do it by, for the first of April. You guys wanna join that again? Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion too. I'll make a motion for membership of Nebraska Association of School Boards for the twenty sixteen seventeen school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mike, Scott seconded.
They had sent out a little pamphlet.
I got letters laying out, you guys probably have them down. Okay, let's vote, myself, yeah, Jason?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mike, yes.
Uh, Vicki?
Yes.
Mike, yes, okay, motion carried. Uh, approve ESU eight contracts for services.
Here we have three, actually, three contracts, uh, through the service unit, there's usually four, one of them will get to the later date, I assume it's on art supplies, they didn't have that one ready yet. Uh, the nursing and the distance learning one, I believe are the same what they asked, the distance learning one deals with, they do a lot of the, the stuff, you know, helping line up classes and things for, you know, the. It's kind of through the internet, but also the arrangement of long distance learning classes and those types of things, that's what that one's for. The nursing contract, that is the same amount that this was last year, I think we had increased last year, but that's the same amount, we get a, uh, nursing services, Mr. Ramel appears on, uh, every Tuesday and then every other Friday is when she comes. The special education services, and that is the big one, this covers our speech pathology, which is a big item, our Eastern Learning Center at Norfolk, which is a really big item, and that's. Thing, this has gone up over a hundred thousand dollars from last year, we are, we are currently sending, actually, we're sending three students over there right now that I was not planning on getting in the school year technically.
Be total or in addition?
How many, how many are we sending there?
We are sending seven right now, plus one to Tower School and, uh, in.
So, there will be possibly ten? There will.
Seven total.
Seven total.
We will lose one of these next year, uh, because of age, they will no longer be, will no longer be responsible for their education. You never know, if you might, you may add some to it, but I usually figure on, uh, Learning Center, I figured about forty-five thousand dollars, might be a little less than that, but that's about what I figure it's gonna cost us to send, send something.
For people.
For people. That doesn't really include transportation here, but that's.
So, this is.
You're on a university cheaper.
So. So, this estimate could be pretty high. It was three, it was three hundred and five, uh, three hundred and some thousand dollars last year, it's up a good hundred thousand from, uh, over there. There's not much.
Don't have much choice like this.
You don't have much choice, no. I'll make a motion to approve the ESU number eight contracts for services for the twenty sixteen seventeen years presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Vicki and Ellen.
Okay, moving second to, Mike?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Mike, yes, Phil, yes, Dave?
Yes.
Vicki, yes, the motion carries.
Act on renewing principal contract. Okay, it's that time of the year that probably needs to do that, I, I do recommend that you hire Mrs. Vicki next year, again, as pre-K twelve president.
Okay.
Anything you wanna say?
There's nothing I wanna say.
Can't wait? Any discussion?
I'm tired.
Okay, I'm due, happy?
I'll make a motion to rehire Mrs. Vicki as the pre-K twelve principal, Clayby Public School for twenty sixteen seventeen school year.
So, you seconded? Moving second to rehire Patty? Steve?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Mike?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Coming back, okay?
At least a lot of them are leaving tomorrow.
Okay, activity director's report, I suppose it's in here.
Um, I talked to Corey a little bit this morning, um, there isn't much, I've canceled a post on the basketball game for tonight. Trying to, trying to reschedule as possible, but I don't have enough time, because they're usually done this weekend after the tournament, so.
Why was it postponed?
Randolph didn't have school.
Oh, they didn't have school all day?
We're, we're kind of on an island again, us and Creighton, but, I, yeah, everybody that way. Oh, isn't he, Ethel?
So, while we're on that activity report, and, so athletics usually run in the negative, is that right?
Yeah, pretty much.
But, what, so what can you do to turn that around, I mean, there's gotta be, is there, there's nothing we can do?
Allow, allow that money that's actually covered.
Fill the stands or host them.
You could host, and we are hosting, what did he tell me, just the other day, he, we're hosting something, some district.
I just.
You know, we're hosting wrestling districts next year.
Next year.
Are we, I know, well, Neil made like fourteen thousand dollars last year hosting wrestling.
Well, they didn't make all that, because you have to turn a lot of it back to the NSA.
I just think we have a good setup and.
It is very, unless you can fill the stands, referees are, uh.
The cost of officials is.
Four hundred dollars.
Keeps going up and going up.
I guess that's not what I, I would have our name in town for every sub-district district.
Well, he put, he, I think Corey puts in.
When we put in, we always give, they try to maintain.
You gotta put a bid in, don't you?
You don't put a bid in, you just put a name in and say you wanna do it.
And they, they lose out facilities, locker room is a big thing with that, you got four locker rooms, what side of the gym you got.
And where they're gonna be, I mean, the teams that are in there, they try to put it centrally located, right now, we're on the edge of our sub-district.
And some of those, you make some money on some you don't make any money on.
Well, you said on our wrestling fight, we didn't make any money, by the time you pay officials and.
Like district track, you don't really have any income on it.
No.
I mean, it's nice to have it on your own track, you wanna show off your facilities and stuff, but you, you lose money probably off those.
Our track, and I know that it's not a lot, not many people go, but we don't charge to get into our track meet, do we?
No.
Every other track meet I go to, I pay to get into, and playing these ways free.
I always cuss those people too, just.
Not my school.
Those passes don't work, at Wisner, I'll tell you that.
Conference last year, I think they charged, they charged.
They charged.
But that was not.
Some of those do because they don't have the income to pay for the metal.
But charging to get into a track meet, you're not gonna make that much money.
Well, that's what I say, it's not much money.
But because by the time you pay those people to sit there and work, you're pretty much.
It's really hard to keep track, but it's so spread out, you have people coming and going.
It's all that, yeah.
And we get, you know, we get a lot of volunteers to help run it off, so it doesn't cost you a lot, other than your starter, maybe gonna cost you.
Starter, your medals.
But medals is a big, yeah, those are the two big things, and the concession stand makes some money on it, you know, those types of things, but it, no, it's not a money thing.
No, I'm sure not.
And, uh, and it's unfortunate, you know, the crowds we get anymore, you just, you don't get enough people on stands to pay for.
Well, the expenses don't change, you still gotta have the timers and all that, you know, or it's, it's setting out.
When you have really good teams, you make money, and when you have, when the art is good, then you, you know, you need to cover it, so. Even in the really good years, you, you still have to kick money into that.
Okay, especially, I was gonna say that, you know, I, I.
Well, I mean, you just can't make enough money even if you have great.
Key, we get a pretty good following, I think, for our, you know, this kind of crowd, I, I, I think overall, we get a pretty good following, you know, compared to what some other schools do, like, you know, when you look at, you know, maybe the team's records are, and, uh, our people come out and support you pretty well, and I, I've seen schools where they've had some pretty good referees and still bringing.
You know, in the health countries, a little bit, they just have little kids programs at halftime every whole week. Bring your grandparents at every game.
Yeah, or dance or any of that.
Class A schools.
Then everybody's fans.
All kinds of people there, Superman against Martian Hason, hat cracked up.
So it is here too, you know, it's.
Okay, are we done with that one? Mrs. Vicki? Digital Rich Water?
Um, statewide writing, well, I thought I was going to tell you it was complete, but we ended up with snow days, and so I have, I was just actually talking to two students in the hallway, and they're going to finish theirs tomorrow, 'cause they went to the wrestling meet. There were state level glitches on computers, and actually, I was going to print this off and I forgot, um, I received this on Friday, and I can print it off if you want. Um, it says, the state education board is going to explore new testing options after online writing testing breaks down again, and it goes through and talks about, the part that bothers me more than anything is that I have to watch the people that are, not just the writing people, but everybody that has to give one of these tests, because I always think their names are attached to them, um, they're all stressed and, you know, I'm a little stressed over this, and, they said, on January twenty-first, three hundred and twenty-five students from eighteen schools in six districts were affected during a one hour and forty-seven minute partial state outage, on January twenty-seventh, fourteen hundred and eighty-eight students from a hundred and twelve districts and eighty-five, or a hundred and twelve schools and eighty-five districts were affected by the same outage. On January twenty-eighth, fifty-three hundred and forty students at two hundred and seven schools, um, lost access to testing tools for four hours and seven minutes. And Valerie Foy, being the genius that she is, says, while no student work, no, that's different, um, while no student work was lost, um, student performance may be affected by the testing. Really? I was observing in a school district on Thursday morning, um, she said, students who experience technology glitches have anxiety, students are concerned that their work will be lost. I watched this, um, on one of our students one year, a couple of years ago, was moving, like, instead of separating a word where it technically should be separated according to the rules of grammar and, and spelling, it was just moving a word, like, um, I don't know, just pick one up here. Um, formative, right, I got formative assessments on here, we just put the F O R and then move the M A, and just move it at that point, and this girl couldn't take the test, we had to shut her out of the test, and she had to do it the next day. We always wait until the end for this reason, to make sure that a lot of those things are worked out, and then they don't have to, but we didn't plan on waiting this long, but the snowstorm helped us out. So now, after they have this, we're going to something else, I'm gonna get, so we've done this for a couple of years, this isn't working, um, this gets sent to the state of Minnesota, and nobody's gonna correct it. Um, it says, now that the new accountability system, the credit schools for effective educational practices coupled with the new federal Every Student Succeeds Act, 'cause NCLV is now gone, um, they're going to come up with a new testing system. Yay, everyone's really excited about that. So I, 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 we didn't run into any problems that day that we were there, I think, um, Tom said one of the computers shut a kid out, but he was able to recover what they were doing, and luckily, it wasn't one of the kids too worked up about something, but, you know, we had, you know, you could lose an hour and forty-seven minutes, and that was when your testing time was, it creates a little bit of anxiety in your school. So everything, I mean, grade four still takes theirs on the, on the paper, we still write out their essays, so. Um, we have started looking at textbooks for next year, uh, the social studies program needs to be updated, elementary through grade eight, um, I think they were, we did history, you know, over my first few years I was here, because those were in such bad shape, and we're gonna try to get, um, kind of the same series to go all the way through grade eight, that's what we did before, 'cause I think I was, I was here when we ordered them the last time. I don't think government is being updated until next year though, 'cause we have thirty-seven coming in next year, and that's the biggest class, and we won't, we won't need that many books, so, we're gonna wait. Um, we went to Chicago, um, I thought the reading program went well, for the reading conference, um, it was very well organized, we didn't have to do a lot of running all over, um, it was based on reading recovery, but we go to, um, reading conferences that are all based on a program that they want you to buy. Um, we don't necessarily use it, but if you pick out the bits and pieces that work, um, we did a lot of splitting up, so that we went to, I think there were eight different sessions, and there was some, uh, writing ones that went along well with it, um, I think, I, I ended up dead buying, they found some books. Um, Nebraska standards are huge in book tails, and they make a lot of comparisons, and they found a series there that was based, how did I talk about it? I can't remember.
Give the example, give the example of Cinderella.
Like Cinderella, the story of Cinderella as told by the wicked stepmother, it's coming from her perspective, and so I had Karen go online and see, because that we were all given, well, we were given free books, but we were going over there one at a time, so we had to figure out, well, what we needed for the books. But they're soft covers, so they won't really last that long, and Karen could find them for me, and so we ended up ordering the whole series for the library, so the teachers will have them, because our standards are huge into those, and so, um, there was one about wordless books. Tristan Thompson, huh, and it could be used at secondary level, there's lots to get them to write and figure out what the story is supposed to be about, instead of having everything given to them, so. Um, I went to, actually, all the assessment ones are the ones that I went to here, on how to use formative and some of the assessments, not necessarily just what's in your reading programs, because again, like I said, when you go to reading conferences, they're trying to sell you a program, and they were trying to sell like a reading recovery program, but you could still get a lot out of it if you, if you listened and paid attention. Maps testing, we will start at the end of February. Parent-teacher conferences, eleven, it is Thursday, the eleventh, from two to seven, we will have an in-service on the twelfth, Friday is going to be CPR, I think every, we decided every staff member was going to do CPR. By the time we did coaches, um, the response team, and whoever else needed to be done, we had about eight people left, so we're just gonna do everybody that day, and we'll kind of split them in half, because I'm gonna have the high school work on updating, um, course descriptions, and I'm gonna have the elementary, and we'll look at the new math and language arts standards, and make sure that those are all lining, they should line up, but, um, 'cause treasures and sacks and both line up with math, but we wanna make sure we're getting all of that covered, so that's, and what we'll be doing that day, and then I'm gonna take a few and I'm gonna work on our school improvement stuff. So there'll be lots of people floating around that day.
Somebody comes in, does the CPR training?
Beth, and then she's bringing somebody with her, that's the only one who does it, so, that's probably the day she's, yeah, she's here on Friday, so. Lots of activities, I just put some of the highlights on here, FCC LA District Star, uh, was held January twenty, KDC by qualified for state, um, we had several students placed that did not qualify for state competition, I think most of them aren't going, they just won't present. Um, South France Honor Band was held, uh, January twenty-third, five students medaled, uh, they did conference band here, looked a bit different than most conferences, when you, when you actually audition, they give you your seat, and we had a lot of kids that made, um, first chair, and they didn't know that until they got there, then, and when they got there, they'd have to try out again and see if they can make it, so. And then, um, Kirsten Norris made, went to state, and I'm assuming she's to, I don't know if I should say this, so I'm just gonna be quiet until she tells them, she had somebody that didn't know they'd made one of themselves.
Have they, have they got the new instruments?
Yeah. Yeah, they came in last Friday.
Some more today.
Probably some coming in.
Yeah, some more later in the week.
Everything has to be inspected before they leave here, and so it's kind of a process. Coming in on pallets, is that correct? I, they, you know, they're.
So they're here, right, we're not having a, a speech?
They did not have it, they went to Wenside.
So they're not having one in the future either, I mean, as for this year.
Not this year.
I think they had one last year.
Yeah, they had it the same day, they were on the show.
So why aren't they doing that, or it's?
Our teams were, we were falling down to very few teams, and people were going, I mean, it, it's kind of a cycle, and people will quit going to this one, and they'll pick up and do it to a different one, and you just take a couple of years off, and they'll probably have it again, because people will wanna come back.
Kind of, probably, it sounds like then you're fighting for a good date on the calendar, basically, where nobody else has any.
Well, on any given day, I'm guessing there's probably ten speech meets that go on in any particular area. Well, we, and that's one of the things that our kids, I think I put that on here, um, they went the twenty-seventh to Howells, um, Brittany Blacker was the only kid that medaled, um, in the varsity group, and then we had several in the novice, but at Wenside, they, you were varsity, everybody was, it was a free-for-all, and it was a big meet, so, um, I would guess, how many, how many do you suppose are going on at the same time? I mean, you could probably call ten schools in the area within a hundred miles and have a speech meet on that day.
Because they skipped, we hadn't had it a few years ago, plenty.
We had it every year I've been here, so they probably took off.
What year was it?
A few, and then, you know, you'll decide that, gosh, this is a pretty good speech meet, so we'll come back, and I know that the people that did the farm and home show wanted them kind of to be back.
Brought more people in, they said when I was talking to some vendors.
They were kind of begging to have it back, and, and maybe they will, I don't know, 'cause we, I guess the kids did much better on Saturday, I didn't get there for all of it, because I came up here for the farm and home show, but, um, we had several first place.
They said the judges were, there was a lot of difference in judges between the two days.
Well, it's a very subjective thing, I, I sit, I sat and listened to one on water depletion, I went to that, I mean, I wasn't that excited, I'm sorry, twenty-four times, yeah, but, it wasn't that exciting for me. I like, you know, and then, though, I listened to the entertainment round, and you have this person that's laughing and carrying on, and, and so you think this person's gonna do well, and that's not at all the case. I mean, her speech was funny, it was one of our kids, and, you know, it's, you just know the kid, and you know the background, and, you know, and her pet peeve was accelerated reader, just so happened that I had talked to her on Friday while getting her AR done, so, they did much better, but, um, I don't know, I think they'll take a couple of years off and then try it again and get different schools, because there's several meets, and some of these people have gone, and we went to, Wednesday, when they went to Howells, there was a school there, been to five meets already, they started in November, that's a pretty long time.
Was it Wausau or?
Wausau started early, um, Crofton was pretty polished, but, you know, um, like, the O I D that, uh, one of the O IDs didn't even come close at the first meet, and then were, many of our kids knew scripts by this meet already, so, you know, they placed that in this meet.
I just don't, maybe it has a really good history of speech, but I know, and I know they're down, they're young right now, and they're coming back, you know, last year, they were, had so many novice games, but I just hate to, if you lose that big speech meet to any old school, you kind of lose a little bit of your history and.
Yeah, well, I just think they, I think a lot of people do that, they just rotate it around and.
Like Wausau and Crofton though, I mean, they've been, and they're great in one acts too, they have been for years, both of them.
So go Saturday, because it's at Wausau, there's, uh, obviously, you know, because of wrestling, but, um, that'll be a good speech meet, they'll be a lot of state champions there. And then, like I said, the calendar, in February is full, March wasn't looking too bad, but it's filling up fast, um, we're trying to negotiate prom being moved to, I have to meet with Creighton tomorrow, um, maybe to the Legion, just for the simple fact that that floor, we have to have the mats down, it becomes very difficult, we're gonna see how much it costs to move it down there. Then you don't have to close the gym, I mean, we don't know what the weather's gonna be like, they have to be in there, I mean, it just, we don't have to ruin our floor, and they have a dance floor, so.
And a kitchen.
And a kitchen.
Right, and they need the income.
And he said he would have to move the alcohol, I said, yes, if I made a, yeah.
Still be able to control it.
That's returns.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll see how that goes, I'm in the process of trying to get that done now, so that we don't have to worry about things happening to this floor, and, you know, girls go out and buy those shoes, and they can't wear them, and they don't have to take them off, but.
They'll still be able to control the floor, they can't come back.
There, there's what? Just the two magazines? So, that's my project, and we can just try to get that, otherwise, I mean, it'll just be here, like it always is.
What is from, people might, I do believe, and we would do the promenade down there as well, I mean, I think that was one of their concerns, is parents don't leave, yes, they do, can we just tell them, you stay, you're sponsoring, I know, but. They go to the line again?
Can't answer that, I have no idea, I haven't really been contacted, I'm assuming that, are they going to the lines?
I don't think so. I haven't heard a thing.
They're lying, I don't think they're gonna happen this year, I don't think.
Just wondering.
I haven't heard a thing.
Still do the games, or is it, no, their post-prom party?
Do they still do, I'm assuming they'll do the games here, right?
I think so.
I've heard games from bouncy houses, to, I've heard of all sorts of weird.
Well, we have not been contacted about anything for post-prom, other than can they do baskets and a game?
Stay out of all that.
I would stay out, I would do.
Yeah.
There's no paper clips over there.
There's what?
No paper clips, Tammy said they only order once a year supplies, is that right?
The big majority of them, and I'm sure we have paper clips somewhere.
Paper clips are, 'cause she came over the other day and got some, not paper clips, but those clam.
Binders.
There's not a box of paper clips, or that's. No, paper clips, oh, you're talking paper clips? Paper clips, not a box over there. And she says, we only order it once a year.
She's never said.
I'm thinking it's only February, you're out, can't we order some more?
There's lots of paper clips.
I looked in the. She came over and got some binder clips, she said, but there's no paper clips.
She never said it would be.
Can we just check with her and see what supplies she needs?
We probably have paper clips.
Yes, we do, Jan does, and I do both. Perfect, because.
No, she's never said it works.
No, no, well, I think she just felt they're out, and so there's nothing she could do. No. And there, it might be some things like that, but not paper clips. Peter's stopping.
You know, as people order those things by cases, they write down one, they want one box, and they order one piece, and so, but binder clips, though, maybe they need those.
No, paper clips.
Thanks.
She didn't have any.
Kenny?
There's one, thanks, I were you earlier.
I'm done.
President's report, um, the only thing I have to say is, uh, we've been really busy, it seems like we've had a lot of meetings, and I think you guys have done a nice job, and voluntary for things, and I appreciate all that, and so, it was another month, and we'll probably slow it down a little bit, we'll have to have some meetings, but thanks for your good work. Oh, yeah, we did, you guys get letters from, uh, what class were they, six-day class or somebody? They were going on, they went, they saw animal, they had Animal Farm, which was a.
Junior high kids.
Junior high kids, oh, okay, I didn't know.
She's on a six-class.
Right.
She doesn't.
About propaganda, okay, and so, they had some things that, um, they sent us that we should consider.
They're cracking me up, I always write comments, and so that's what I'm in the process of doing, and then I go in there and talk to them, and I said, but do you have the right way to approach this, some of these crack me up, I said, I bet you it's cell phones, and it'll be water bottles, and it'll be.
Snow days. Snow days, we got.
Snow days, we have their wish.
So we usually, I go in and talk to them about how, if you're going to mail these, you better have some facts. I think I wrote on here, something about the snow days.
Do you want me to come and talk to them?
Oh, this one, this one cracked me up about, um.
Tresco's one?
No, I like that one. So, oh, so the next time you take a cold drink of refreshing water, think of all the poor students with desert-dried mouths sitting in the classroom suffering. I laugh at them. And, yeah, and then I always write, do you have the facts that support this stuff?
That's not even as bad as it used to be, it used to be an hour and a half class, now it's just forty-five minutes.
Um, this one about snow days, this many people were killed, and I said, was this because of school? No. Oh, so your facts don't even support your story. So it is kinda funny, I read these every year.
And then the, the cell phones were.
That's always a big one. Of course, there were two standing out here this morning about nine fifteen. I said, are you two texting each other? No. Oh, okay. Who would you be texting at nine fifteen? Your mom? You just left. So yes, I get these two, and she does it every year. So this must be the first year she mailed them?
Please, Dan, I'm not gonna respond as a group to this, Eric, you guys are welcome to respond.
Hi, Tom.
Thanks, it's a little bit of a farm show, so I guess I was waiting for a response.
What?
My daughter's waiting for a response.
Why go through my, all my comments on here?
I can go talk to a few of you, I mean, too.
Well, I still will go and talk to them, cause that way they know that I read them.
I responded to it on the snow days, because I don't know if you've seen the things on the lockers, about the snow days from, you know, we didn't take those snow days on there. People say, run things off and all these comments, so the other day after this, after our snow days, I put a thing up on the end of the wall, and I said, wow, that had a weather warning, so. Somebody tore it down.
Was this a horn in the building or up above outside?
No, this is in the building, so that we can let teachers know. Uh, teacher negotiations, the, the P P E A did, uh, agreed at the, uh, negotiated agreement that was talked about last time. Uh, I do need, uh, probably, well, I think you're both of you, Bob, the chief negotiator and the president. I need you to sign it for the board there, and I talked to Dean today, and then I'll get them to sign it. Are you in the right one? About the board over there. And let's see, board elections, incumbents sign up by February sixteenth, non-incumbents have to March first. And I was gonna talk about the state writing thing, and Patty already did that.
I wouldn't roll, sorry.
Okay. That's still in the only place. Or I can do it, I can go draw another sheet, Bob. He'll be in sometime, I'll have you sign it. That's fine. Okay, and I think that's all I have.
You have gym lights on here?
Oh, I, I didn't mention gym, yeah, missed those. Uh, I was contacted, or I contacted a person, they're from, uh, actually, West Point, I believe. Uh, they were gonna come last week, and then with Blizzard, they didn't get here, he called me this morning, he's, he said he'd either be here this afternoon, he wasn't sure, or it'd be Thursday or Friday, he's gonna come and work up a bid. And then I think, um, I think we're gonna get, I don't know, I think Jake Peterson might put money in yet, I'm not sure on that. Gail, he talked to Gail, and I told Gail we need him, I, I told him, make sure that they know, I want him, I'm gonna want him early enough, so that we can, I want the board to be able to make a decision next month on what we're gonna, so we can get it lined up to get that done before we do the gym floor, so. And I, we, we kinda had some conflicting, I shouldn't say conflicting bids, but there's two different types of lighting, or two different types of LED lighting. One of them's a little more expensive than the other one, and some of them are bid with the less expensive, like the bulbs are more, they look more like a fluorescent bulb than these others. I'm leaning a little bit more towards the expensive one, because they're a lot more efficient, they're gonna cost more to put in, but they're much more efficient, and I think you get better lighting out of them, so. But we'll take a look at those, I hope to have that next, next month.
So one day we're gonna do the grant work and everything on that, are we all in that same boat, with the bidding?
I, I, I think two of the companies that have already did, will, I think.
And that's kinda guaranteed, then, that you'll get, or not necessarily?
I don't know, it's guaranteed, I, I, yes and no, like, I think, I think if you apply for it, you'll probably get it. Okay, I think that's all I have. Okay, anybody else have anything?
Cardiac arrest. That's what it is.
Oh, okay, the other, I'll go forward there. Do we adjourn?
Cardiac arrest.
Go through or a walk-through, or a walk-through is part of it? I think the walk-through is part of the board meeting, I think, or, otherwise you're technically discussing things. Okay, let's, uh, through a walk, walk-through, and let's start with the junior high, though, particularly for those who even have that.
Is there gonna be anybody in here to leave our stuff?
I think you leave, leave your stuff, okay.